All right, let's stand in for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now I need the approval of the agenda.
I'm going to approve the agenda.
Second.
Second. All in favor? Awards? We don't have any awards or recognitions at the time? Public participation? At 5:45? Keep the moving? All right. We'll come, we'll do the public participation at 5:45. Since that's the time is scheduled and that's the time we have, it's written. And we will go on to the consent agenda. Any questions? Or anyone about the consent agenda? Thank you. Did you have a question?
No, I make a motion to accept it.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, Mr. Townsend. All right. All in favor? We're going down to action items. Number 10, 10 page.
Good afternoon, Ms. Carson, Board Chair, Board Members, and Dr. Johnson.
Good afternoon.
This evening, I stand before you seeking approval to request additional appropriations from carryover from last year for our ALL in Virginia grant. This grant, excuse me, is actually a three-year grant, which we started half a year last year. We received all funds, all revenue fund, in last year in the total amount of $968,000 and some odd dollars, and we only spent like $45,000 of that because we started the grant at, in the middle of the year. So we're actually asking the Board to appropriate it into this year so we can continue our ALL-in, which will give us a total, if approved, $33,713,283.80 into the new year budget.
I'd like to make a motion.
Second?
I'd like to make a motion that we appropriate those funds.
All in favor? I think, I think you all, thank you, Mr. Townsend. Action item 10B?
There was a question at the last meeting regarding policies BDD and VVDL. The question was, how can we ensure confidentiality for Board members allowed to discuss topics in closed session remotely? Below you have the attorney's response, and therefore I recommend that the Board approve policies BDD and VVDL.
Summate. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Mr. Townsend, raise your hand up?
Nope.
Okay.
abstain.
Abstain.
Abstain, thank you. And Ms. Stif, did I see you? You were, we go high? No, I'm sorry. Thank you. Tennessee?
You will make up this?
Yes.
Okay. This is the last of the new policies that VSBA has sent us. We're expecting more any day now. But the only new one, most of them are updated to reflect new code, and it's very little substantive changes to them. IGVD is new because of the Virginia Literacy Act. And that's really the only one that had any, the IKH, retaking SOLs, that policy got updated to comply with the Virginia Literacy Act. And KBE is our policy for our Internet privacy. And, I mean, there's, there are, I mean, hopefully y'all have had a chance to go through them and take a look, and if you have any questions. Otherwise, I'd recommend that we adopt this.
Are there any questions, Board Members, about the policies? No questions?
No.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve?
My motion, second.
Second. All right. All in favor? All right. We'll go to non-action items. Should we start it?
Yeah.
I think we'll start it and then interrupt it more. Okay. All right. We'll do that. We'll go back to public comments time. And, because the next one may be a little lengthy. And I'm still wanting to take it for just the moment. I will not click that. You got it? Yeah, I got it. All right. These are the guidelines for the public comment section. The purpose of the public comment portion of the meeting is to direct comments to the Board and/or provide information. The Board listens to each comment and does not engage in dialogue with the speaker. Comments should be respectful and demonstrate consideration for others by not referring to any specific person or personal incident. When the speaker's allotted time expires, the Board Chair will give a signal, and the speaker should conclude his or her comments. Each participant has up to five minutes to speak. The superintendent will provide the speaker with a follow-up response on behalf of the Board. Thank you in advance for following this procedure. Your cooperation ensures individuals can share their comments while also allowing for the timely completion of the Board's agenda. All right, we have one name, one person who signed up. George Carter. Please give your name, your address, and what district you live in.
My name is George Carter. I'm 7909 Prince Edward Highway in Prospect, Virginia, and I'm a citizen of the Prospect District. I come to you this evening on behalf of the GoTail Ministry. With me is Ray Marston, who is actually one of the chairpersons of this program, and we have visited you a couple of times this year talking about that. It's well on its way to happening. The dates are set. The events are in place. It is going to take place in Prince Edward County, and it's going to be big. I come to you tonight, there are opportunities that are offered to each of the school systems that are actually nonreligious programs. And they are in the form of assemblies. They have a speaker that will come and address the high school and the middle school departments and the kids, and it's on life choices, and it covers bullying, drug abuse, lots of things. The counties around you have gotten on board with this pretty strongly. We are really facing a little bit of resistance in Prince Edward, getting the material to the high school and the middle school, and actually getting callbacks from them. These are great opportunities that it would be a awful shame for Prince Edward to miss out on, we feel. They do make differences in lives. They make a difference in the kids' choices going forward. I know you guys saw the news today, what happened in Georgia. If something like that could be averted, wouldn't it be a great event? So again, it's a nonreligious assembly. It's purely to help kids stay on choices that will make a big difference in their life, staying in school, like I said, the bullying, the drug abuse, things like that. So if you could maybe get the word to the folks that we sure would like to talk to them about getting in, we would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
No one else sign, does this, any person you want to speak? All right. Go on to R.C. Ms. Garrett?
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Members, and Dr. Johnson. I am here tonight just to explain a little bit further the strategic plan metrics. You all had a draft of the strategic plan presented last month, and the metrics were at the back of that. So I just want to go into a little bit of detail about how these metrics were developed. Thank you. This is the actual document that was on the back of the strategic plan, and this is actually the five-year metrics. It's hard to see in here. Some of the information, we're still awaiting the data so that we can add that for VIVAS and a few of the other pieces of the data points that we don't have. The purpose of this is just to really talk to you about the baseline data, how it was obtained, the significance of that data, and how the goals were set for each year for the five-year plan. This is Goal One, academic achievement measures, and for each of these, and you can, I won't read all of this to you, you can look at this later if you'd like. It has the metric description, and then how the data was obtained or is obtained, if we have to still gather some of it. And then the significance of each piece of data that we are including. The first one is self-explanatory. This is the SOL information for math and reading, and we understand how that is obtained, but the importance of that is to identify areas where students may need additional support, but also to let us know how we are performing. That PALS data has now switched to VOWs, and that is part of the, the LA, the Virginia Literacy Act, and they actually are doing that new screener right now at the elementary school. And that's for students K through three, and that really is a diagnostic, and it tells us where students are performing. But the reason that data is important is it lets us know if we're moving students closer to where they need to be. So it's very important for us to keep our eye on that data as we're moving forward. When we look at staffing and professional development support, some of that talks about the teachers that are retained yearly, and then how many licensed and endorsed teachers that we have. So that data is self-explanatory. We go over that data yearly just so we can see that, to make sure we are keeping teachers and that we have the licenses that we need. Professional leave data, that's actually talking about how many of our teachers are taking the opportunities to go out, outside of the division, to receive professional development, because we really want to build our teachers and send them to places where they can receive development outside of our school. And so we track that data as well, and to see what kind of offerings they are asking to attend. And then the attendance record of just school-based professional development, as well as survey data. That lets us know if what we're providing to teachers is actually what they need, and is it actually making a difference moving forward. So that handles Goal Two. When we go to Goal Three, Safety and Security, when we look at the first one, that talks about full room services, but it could also be any other service provider among the five years, because we don't know in five years what we will be doing. So we want to make sure we leave that open. But this is really looking at wraparound services for students. And we all know how important that is and why that data is very important for us to track. The school-wide information system, which we call SWISS, is what we use to track our discipline referrals. And looking at that data to make sure we are decreasing discipline referrals is helpful for us maintaining the school environment. Attendance data, this talks about chronic absenteeism, which I feel that you all are well-versed in chronic absenteeism. You know what it is, how we track it, and why it's important. Family and community engagement, this is attendance at family engagement events. We actually have been tracking attendance of family engagement events to see what is it that families want? Is this actually an event that we had a lot of attendance, or do we need to maybe change something? Power school data, since we have switched to a lot of things being online, including updating student records, we need to then track how many of our parents are accessing that information, how many do we have that still need to complete forms. So that data is really important in making sure we are keeping communication available to parents at all times. Internship data, this is talking about the community partnerships that we have with students with work-based learning, and as we're trying to get students out into the community. So we do record that data and track that, and we of course want to increase those partnerships. And this just really gives you a general overview of how we look at data and setting trends over five years. So what is it that we look at to make sure that we can decide if PALS data was this year one? What do we need to do for year three and year four? And each of the goal, it's different depending on the resources, potential challenges, and realistic expectation for change. So looking at each baseline data in the long-term vision, and then we decide gradually how can we get to where we need to be. Achievement goals are set by the state. When you look at federal accountability, they tell us where they want us in five years as a school division. So we then base where we are, and we try to make strategic growth into that so that we can make the goals based on what the state is asking for us to achieve. I know I did that fast, but any questions?
One of the reasons that we moved this from action to non-action is because last Thursday, the Virginia Department of Education approved the new standards, the new accountability system. Since that has been approved, we want to make sure that this plan is, continues to be aligned with the new standards and assessments and system, the accountability system. So we recommend that this continue to stay in draft form until everything is solidified. Do you anticipate the academic achievement portion, that based on the new accountability overall thing, that that, that will change? That we will need to redo those measures?
Yes.
Or those will stay? We would, I guess my point is, are we still going to want to monitor proficiency in the reading and the math SOL scores? That would stay the same?
Yes.
Other things might change?
Yes.
Okay. I, last month when we went over this, well, I've got two questions. The awaiting data on the proficiency for the math and the reading, is that different? Is that number going to be different than what we're about to go over later on in the agenda when we look up, when we see the SOL scores?
It is not, but we wanted you all to see the SOL scores before we said.
We put it in here, okay. Secondly, last month, I personally would like this SOL performance further differentiated by school. Because I think it's really important that we see, I mean, that we make specific goals. The elementary school is doing well, but we need, rather than having an overall school division goal, I really think we need to have individual school goals, and, and I want to make sure I'm right, for high school and middle school, science is also included in part of the accreditation standards. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And that would stay the same. So it feels to me that for English, it ought to be reading and math for the elementary school, and then for middle school and high school, we have all three of the areas that are actually going to be, that we're going to be graded on what our current is and what we hope that to be over the next five years. I think this is misleading to say we have an 80% pass rate in SOLs in math if we made that next year, but we could end up with still having schools not meeting their individual goals, if that makes sense. Yes, the state, because this is a division strategic plan, that is why we have the division goals. Each individual school has its own school improvement plan where they measure their own individual academic goals. So that is a part of measurement, but the state does give, and as you will find out tonight, the state does give the division a reading and math score. So it's not misleading in that you will have a score for the division, and then you'll have the individual scores. Now, if you want to add, it's the Board's will to add individual schools here at the division metrics, then you're welcome to do that, but that's why it's that way.
Well, at any time, will the science and the history become part of the accreditation that you have to pass them?
Science is always.
Science is.
History is not.
History is not. History will trump.
Not, I suspect not. I suspect not.
I think one time it works, that's why.
I have one more question, is like on Goal Two, that's the new data point for the last one, and I get that we haven't been keeping up with that. That's going to be brand new. We're going to start keeping up with it this year?
Correct.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
Do we have a goal though for how many, I mean, have we set a goal for how many we want for this year?
So without baseline data, it's really difficult to.
Difficult to know, okay.
Right. So once we get the baseline, so we know where we are, then we can set. We can make a guess, but it really would not give us a good number. So we want to start with something that's our baseline.
So it actually would be a four-year plan for that, really?
Honestly, yes.
Okay.
And then for the, for the VIVAS data, that we can set a goal. VIVAS will be released probably in September.
Okay.
Once we get that, we can set that, and then we can make our incremental growth from that and set our five-year goals.
And same with the attendance and power school data for parents involved.
Yes.
We can't, we're going to be able to get a number for that before we, and then set goals.
Yes.
Okay.
Those we should have by the end of the month.
Okay. Thank you.
Have a question to comment?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garrett.
Going down to information items? Are you all ready? I'll see.
So if I have something I want to say?
In the world we live in, multi-factor authentication, a little two-factor. Thank you, sir. Well, Dr. Johnson, Madam Chair of the Board, we're happy to be back to provide an update for the month of September. I've got Jen Cox here, who's the project manager. I've seen her down here quite a bit over the past several months. She's been leading our effort in a great way, leading our team. We're at a great spot today. We've got just a brief agenda that we'll go through, some brief project updates, some additional interior images. I think when we were here in April, we might have shared a couple interior images. So now that the project is designed and wrapped up, and on the street right now, we've got some other images to share. And then we'll go through a few next steps and take any questions you all might have. So again, we're happy to be here and great to be at this point in the project. So some brief project updates, I guess, you know, the old adage, you know, picture's worth a thousand words. We've seen lots of things happening behind us, this going on in terms of the mobile classroom complex. Everything's on schedule right now, and the schedule that we provided the update, I think, was back in June when I was here with Mr. Hodges from Kindridge. So a lot of the kind of under slab work that's happening, sewer tie-ins, canopy footings are complete. You see some ongoing grading that's going on for, in that playground area to set those four units to go in those areas. Canopy has started going up. That should be completed in the next week or so. We've got six classroom units and four toilet units that have been installed, and those utility connections have been started. The balance of the mobile classrooms will be here that third week in September, and we're still tracking for having the project complete in early October, that October 16th kind of timeframe we're talking about for moving children into the, into the classrooms. That's still on track and on its gap, so we're glad to see that occurring. No real major hiccups happening so far in the field. It's been pretty, pretty smooth so far regarding the mobile classroom complex. The big project advertised last Wednesday, I believe, the 28th. We have five general contractors that have downloaded drawings for our website. Shockey, Kindridge, Jamerson, English, and then a firm out of Raleigh we don't work with. They've started to kind of move up here, Cooper Tasia. Really good group of general contractors, nobody in that group that we'd be concerned with if they ended up getting the job. So that's, that's really, really good to see. We saw the English truck. That's right. Just one week into it. We saw the English truck out here. I think they were on site today doing some investigating. So I think their contractors were taking, taking this project very seriously and want to do some homework during the bidding period. So just some ongoing things. We'll be issuing some supplemental information during the course of bidding that are called addenda. So just additional instructions and some supplemental information that'll be going on. Some additional coordination going on with door hardware. The building official has electronic copy of the drawings. We're going to check in with him tomorrow to make sure he's reviewing those drawings. We hope he is. We know that the permit can't be approved until we have a contractor on board, but we certainly hope that the, that the bidding is going on right now. We have a pre-bid conference scheduled on site for Monday, September 16th. So we'll, so we hope to have good attendance there, and we hope that contractors who are looking at drawings can take advantage of that time to ask any questions and get some additional project information. Right now, bids are scheduled to be open on the 26th of September, so we just have service today. And then still planning to come back to you all on October 9th for recommendation. I know the county has been working on financing. I think they're planning to submit their application for the DPSA bonds on October 9th as well, so lots of good things are happening October 9th. And so that's where we are in terms of progress. Lots of good things happening. This is definitely a feel-good meeting. Lots of, lots of good things happening, and things happening on the site. Before we get into images, any, any questions about where we are progress-wise and where we are in terms of the schedule? Awesome. Just a reminder of the temporary classroom complex, just, I think we've shown this image a couple of times, just in terms of the work that's going on. I think kind of the back half of those units have been set. You see those out there behind us and the Kennedy work going on. And none of this has changed. This is, this is what's, what's, what was did in the first project back in May, and this is still the diagram that we're pursuing with the overall project. It's in the middocuments right now. So none of that's changed. It's a, it's a plan that came together, working with Dr. Johnson and her team, that came together early on, and it's stayed valid and true throughout the course of the process. So we'll go through some project images. I'll go through the exterior images, let Jen come up and kind of go through. So we'll go through some project images, I'll go through the exterior images, let Jen come up and kind of go through. We've got the exterior images except for this one, you've seen before, but the, the balance of the interior images now that we're through design, Jen's gonna walk you through those and, and we're thrilled to share those with you. This was a drone image, they came from Cambridge, this was taken maybe two weeks ago, two, three weeks ago. When the units first started showing up, you can see the, the construction fencing around there in orange and the staging area of some of those units there, the parking lot, it's just right out here, and then the beginning of the setting of those units. So that, that is again, two, three weeks ago, lots happened since then. We've got utility, again, utility connections and some of those things happening to the units that have been set in place at the, at the back of the site, so as you can see kind of the sequencing they're working from back to the front is of those units. So lots of good things happening. Again, I think these are images that we've shown before in terms of the exterior image.
Get the color palette right now.
Right, yeah, yeah, final color palette that we've been working through with Dr. Johnson and her team. So, yeah, just the connector building, this is where buildings E and F are now and will not be come November and as we start to build that new kind of connection. I see the new main entry, really identifiable main entry, that's gonna be really exciting, I think, for students and teachers and the community to, to kind of experience the building. The administration there on the left, community room there on the, on the right, again, that connection back to the buildings that remain. So lots of natural light, identifiable front door, that's, that's important from a security perspective, so people know where to go when you come in the front door and that same security protocol with the security vestibule. So folks coming to campus after school started would need to be vetted and buzzed into the school before they can access the school. Another entrance there, another view, you can see kind of those dormer windows in the back of something that, that was, folks kind of gravitated towards, bringing a lot of natural light into that connection corridor there between, between the two buildings, but also between the main entry and the library, which we'll see here in just a minute as well. You may recall that we're adding or inserting a, a public entrance there on the left. You can see where that canopy feature is that will allow the gymnasium and that area of the building to be accessed after hours for parks and rec or community events and the gymnasium, and that will, that will allow that building, that part of the building to be accessed without accessing the rest of the building, so we'll have separation, so we can access different parts of the building depending on what the school or the community need, need might be. And with that, I'll let Jen go through the interior images.
So as you saw in the images outside, you had that curvy entrance coming in. We continue having it go through all the way through the library beyond. That's symbolic of the river that comes through here and just the mountains and the curves of the county, really want to embrace that. We're gonna have image on the right, just like a, like a vinyl image, I think we're gonna work with Dr. Johnson on what that actual image will end up being. It's gonna be a nice feature and then we have the security office on the left, that smaller window. It will be a one-way mirror, has a, or one-way window, so it's not updated in this image, but that'll be your security office right there. This is after you get through the security vestibule that you're saying. And we have some cove lighting that will happen above that will highlight the wood ceiling. So you could see it as you're coming up to the school and it'll just light up as you see it.
Is this a vision of us walking in the front door?
Yes.
Okay, just making sure I'm right.
You'll see the Eagle Library beyond, yeah.
Okay.
So you'll be able to see all the way through.
Yes.
This is the front desk. These are some of the finishes that our interior design group has come up with. Again, we're trying to use that wave with some of the interior fixtures. And then the white opening is entrance into the admin suite. The security door, the security office is in that solid panel door right there. This is the cross corridor that has those dormer windows looking that will bring in the light in. We have a series of grade changes from the two parts of the school that we are bridging together. So I think we have about a seven-foot grade difference, so we have a series of subtle ramps that go up. This is inside of your library. There's more images on the backside of the building and the purple and yellow, I mean gold. Sorry. The purple and gold.
What is the yellow thing that looks like cheese?
Oh, it's some seating, it's some library seating, yeah. It moves around, you can put it in different areas, yes. Even the case work will, you can move it all around, so. If the librarian wants to set up different stations or if she wants to have a book sale, everything kind of can be rearranged. So we have a classroom there on the right that will house about 30 students. And that'll have it in this image, but if you go down that way, there's a big storytime area for the children. So, yeah, so the panels above are just some acoustical features to keep the sound down.
You may remember when we were doing the budgeting, we, we, we did not budget for new furniture throughout the whole school. And we've talked about if, if the contingency holds up, there might be opportunities to add some target for, targeted new furnitures throughout the school. But in the new parts of the building, we do have this furniture included in the bid documents right now. So in these areas, that's the new construction, we do have new furniture plugged in.
That's right. So this is an example of a new classroom. We'll have higher ceilings versus existing, which will be a little lower because of the time period it was constructed. But we have some pop-up features that created to be more spacious inside. I think the lowest is like eight feet, but it goes up to like 14 feet is on points of classrooms. This is the gymnasium. Even though we're doing 26,000 new square foot roughly, we're touching 90,000 square feet of existing. So we have put a lot of effort into sprucing it up, with the new flooring, put in a new divider curtain and then new wall pads and acoustical panels. This is the cafeteria, again, sprucing it up as well, some new ceiling.
This is existing, the cafeteria stayed where it is now?
Correct, we're just sprucing it up with paint, new ceiling, new lighting, new flooring.
So virtually every surface in existing building has been touched in some way with finishes, paint, new ceilings, new lighting.
Bring it up to code where we can.
New roof.
New roof, absolutely new roof.
Yes, already.
And we've, we've given the, the slide out to the secretary, so y'all can have access to all this as well. So next steps, again, we advertised, the drawings are on the street. We advertised August 28th last week, again, a great response from the contracting community. We, we, we know certainly Cambridge, Jamerson and, and English, they talk about this project a, a lot over the past year, so we know they're looking at it very seriously. And two of those are really good contractors that have picked up drawings as well, Shockey and Cooper Tasia. So again, a really, really, really solid general contracting group that's the plan holders right now. Planning to receive bids on September 26th, we'll receive bids here in this conference room at 2:00 that day. And then we've been working with, with St. Anderson on the, the, kind of the waiting period after you receive bids and then there'll be a waiting period after the project's awarded on the 9th until the notice proceeds. So some of these dates are kind of driven by St. An, St. Anderson's counsel. But certainly planning to come back on October 9th to the school board meeting for a, a award recommendation. What will happen between the 26th and the, and the 9th is that we'll review all the bid packages. They'll most likely be a lowest responsible, responsive bidder. It's, would be highly unlikely, we have two bidders with the exact same numbers, so somebody will be low that day. We'll review their bid documents, they also submit a contractor's qualification statement, we'll review that as well. We'll put together a bid recommendation letter, we'll send it to Dr. Johnson and we'll have our kind of thoughts about the bid packages received, the school board, they can have access to that letter as well, you'll use that. I think Heather will end up probably writing a resolution for your consideration for the award that night, that'll go through Dr. Johnson, that'll be part of the agenda. So that's a little bit about that process that'll happen on the 9th. And then if the project's awarded on the 9th, then we expect the notice to proceed to happen to be issued 10 days after the 9th, I believe. So we'll handle, the construction contract's already in the bid documents, St. Anderson's already reviewed that and, and made edits on behalf of Prince Edward County Public Schools. So all of this in the bid documents right now, so really at that point, it's a matter of just kind of filling in the kind of project-specific information in terms of the contract amount, the drawing lists and the specification list. And then we would anticipate construction beginning toward the, the end of October. And currently scheduled to be completed March of 2027. And we will certainly invite the lowest contractor on board to try and improve that if they can. If, if they, once they dig into the project and they, if they can see a more efficient way to kind of navigate the project, we will be all ears to try and, to, to beat that construction schedule. So that's where we are, it's a really good spot right now, I think, in terms of the project. Great progress happening out, outside and again, a really good response from the contracting community. So we'll be glad to answer any questions y'all might have.
I appreciate you, everything that you're doing with that and it looks like we're going in a good direction. And I'd like to just express, I'd like to just comment to that the board, we did, we had decided, we were looking for re-elevating the school, we were glad that Dr. Johnson saw the need for that and she kind of took the lead on it and took it to our supervisor, Mr. Stanley, he worked, I, I, our county administrator worked real well with it and got it, got the ball rolling for us and came up with some funding and supervisors have been moving along with us on that. But I'd like to really, I'd really like to appreciate, express my appreciation for what Dr. Johnson has done for that and that she has moved that forward and had her and her team with the school and everyone there, so I just appreciate that. And I just say that, I appreciate it.
Yeah, they've been, they've been very hands-on in the whole process, even the principal, Ms. Spence.
Yeah, it's about a year ago, a little over a year ago, we had that meeting with the supervisors where the, the support was, was just unanimous. I even commented to Dr. Johnson in the hallway afterwards, just the working relationship between the two boards was just encouraging to see, you know, see that all of the time across the Commonwealth sometimes. There are issues the two boards, you know, will have to work through, but I, you know, from an outsider, you know, we're kind of insiders now, we've been here for a couple of years now, working with you all, but just, you know, working across the Commonwealth, it's, it's just, it's refreshing to see that it's two boards working so well together and it's, it's gonna be a great project. We're just grateful to be a part of it. Yes, sir?
Question, just with this excitement of this many number of potential contractors that's looking to bid, do you project with the construction cost and with this, well, with having the budget, that it could, everything come in on the bid as far as everything collectively, what's your...
We're, we're hopeful, we've had some new construction projects bid recently in, in Reiko and Chesterfield that if you were to kind of pare those numbers down to, to heavy renovation costs, it suggests we should be in the ballpark. But it's like, it's a complicated project and we've been talking with Dr., Miss, Dr. Johnson and Mr. Stanley about, you know, funding and where we are. Yeah, five, five contractors is a good number, we should have good competition. We've seen very competitive bids in central Virginia the last four or five months. A lot of the private work has been put on hold just because of the interest rates, you know, have crept up over the last year or so, so a lot of private work's on hold, so a lot of, a lot of focus on the public sector right now in the contracting world. And so we're, we're hopeful that we'll get numbers, you know, pretty close to where the budget is, fingers crossed.
Other comments, school members?
Thank you so much.
Great, thank you, we look forward to seeing y'all in five weeks.
You gonna move along here?
We have in your executive content, the annual memo that I've provided to the board regarding homeschool trends. If you notice, that number is significantly lower than it usually is, it's cut almost in half. And that is because if you note at the bottom there, these are the homeschool applicants or homeschool participants that have confirmed, they have confirmed documentation that they are in fact homeschooling. So this month of September, we will spend reaching out, trying to make sure that everyone who is homeschooling has in fact turned in the appropriate notification and or documentation. But you can see that the trend is, is similar with the majority of the families that choose to homeschool. Farmville followed by Rice and then followed by Pamplin with Keysville being, well, parts of Keysville, I guess, being the smallest as well as Green Bay, so. So that's it, and then you see it by level as well.
Oh, I just wanted to make sure I understand, we, we think that number is artificially low?
Yes.
Okay.
Because documentation has not been...
Right, 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 okay. Cause that'd be a huge difference.
Any other questions?
That needs to be revisited in October, month of September, reviewed. Second memo has to do with something again that I annually provide to the board, which is the mobility data, how many students have come into the division and how many have gone out. This has been for the 24, 25 school year and this is, most of this was accumulated from the end of last year through August 30th. So you see that we have lost a total of 21 students, gained seven at the elementary level, lost 16 at the middle and 12 at the high school. So if you look, and I apologize, there are row of numbers that are missing for out of state. But if you look, you can see where neighboring counties, where children have gone, where they're coming in from. You can also note out-of-state students as well as students who have gone to private schools. So all of that information is there for the elementary, middle and high.
Questions?
Well, I, I just, I, I guess I'm, I'm a little confused because I looked up at the attendance data that you provided in our consent agenda and is this based on average, I, I, because it...
It's based on power school data.
So it's not based on that number that's given to us about our attendance?
No.
Cause that showed a net loss of 39?
No.
For average, what's the difference? I mean, how...
I will follow up with our power school person.
Okay, thank you.
Cause our power school person did both of these calculations.
Okay.
Any other questions? Moving on? Mr. Postle?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, School Board and Dr. Johnson. This afternoon I'll be going over the preliminary results of our, of last year, standards of learning. So this presentation is basically, it follows a format. I first tell you what, what we're gonna do with the data, then I go to the elementary school. I show you what is commonly referred to out of the gate, some people say raw data, that's what the out points. And then I show you, I'll show you another slide that has the growth factor added to it and then both of them together. And then I give you a summary for each school, so that is the format.
If I may remind everyone that this is still preliminary data. It's being shared because the raw data was already published by VDOE. We said that we would come in September with the data, the data has not been finalized, the accreditation data, because that's what we're looking at, the accreditation data has not been finalized by the state.
That's right.
But this is pretty close.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and start now. What you'll see here is what we plan to do with the data, and we actually already started this process, is to use it to find out where our weak strands are among a population. And I've already shared the last year's data with the high school with that. We'll also look at individual student needs because we're able to dive down that deep, especially with VIVAS. We'll use it for instructional design and reme... We'll use it for instructional design and remedial, remediation programming during and after school. As it says there on the bottom, from V-BOSS, we'll get that data probably at the end of September. That will allow us to fine-tune our remediation and put our efforts where it's most needed. Okay, so we're gonna start with the elementary school. And this is what was pretty much published in the Farmville Herald. This is the out of the gate. And this is without growth. And what I've shown here is what we did last year compared to this year. So out of the gate scores, in reading, we increased six points. In math, we went down one point or one percentage point. And in history, we went up 13 percentage points. When we factor in growth, and the growth is on the bottom now, you can see those scores go up. And with the growth, we went down one percentage point. And with math, four percentage points. Growth is not a factor for history, so you can just see the same, same score from last year compared to this year. They only missed it by one point in history, one percentage point. This slide right here shows them together, where you can see out of the gate from one year to the next and the growth, the growth from one year to the next. Chronic absenteeism went down 10% at the elementary school. And we're projected to be level one indicator in reading, math and chronic absenteeism. Again, history isn't factored as a part, part of the accreditation system. Here's a summary that kind of just details what I just went over. You can see that the elementary school is well above the standard and they're doing well overall. The chronic absenteeism again is something to really point out. That doesn't come by accident. That's a lot of hard work. So decreasing that by 10 percentage points is great. So that is the elementary. I don't know, good shit, if you now go to the middle school?
Please go to the middle school. Yeah, it's a question. Now, just refresh my memory, my memory probably, how does the growth determine?
The growth is determined, well, it depends on whether it's third grade or fourth grade. Third grade, they'll take a, a growth assessment at the beginning of the year. And at the end, they'll look at the SOL scores and they have brackets. So they go from this bracket on the growth assessment compared to this bracket on the SOL. They can receive credit that they actually, same thing as passing the SOL. For fourth grade, they use last year's SOL compared to this year, so.
And so this is each individual student's growth is measured. So let's say at the beginning, well, let's do fourth grade. On third grade SOL, a child made a 200, okay? Really low.
Really low.
But in fourth grade, they made a 325, still not proficient, but they jumped from 200, they, they increased their score by 125 points. That would be included in that growth.
Yes.
Is that correct? And that's what we're getting points for showing we're bringing kids up. We're moving them in the right direction. Is that correct? Okay.
And, and V-BOSS is a very important tool for that.
And the V-BOSS predicts, I want to make sure I understand, is a predictor of where a child may, based on their historical data, what they're gonna score?
Well, that's one part of it. They can show growth, like they'll let you know, hey, this is where the, these students grow, are grew.
Last year.
And, and in subject areas, yes. You can see where subject areas grow from one year to the next. And also they get projections. And the projections are forecasts.
Based on their historical data?
Yeah, and they compare it to the state average and get projections on whether the student will be successful or not.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Thank you.
No problem. Okay, so this is the middle school out of the gate. You can see that in reading, they went down three percentage points. Math, they went up two percentage points. Science, they went down six percentage points. And history, they went down 23 percentage points.
But that test got moved. The, the fifth graders that were involved in the 66%, that 66% included sixth and eighth graders taking it. Is that correct?
Um, with the history, that would've been?
Last year, fifth graders took that history test.
Fifth graders, so that, that, that test is now the elementary school.
Right, so it, the two scores are, I mean, I'm just trying to give the, them the credit that, this history for this year is only on eighth grade.
Eighth grade, yes, ma'am.
And the elementary school got the credit for the history test that the fifth graders took last year. Is that correct?
So, yes, yes. That, that history test went to the elementary school and this is primarily just the eighth grade scores here.
Right, right. Okay.
Which history do they teach in that grade?
Um, that was, that's.
Geography?
It's, I think it's Virginia Studies and, and.
In fourth grade.
Yeah, it's fourth grade and eighth grade is civics and economics.
Civics, yes, okay.
It's, it's a different, different type. Okay, so the growth points here, you can see, again, the growth points on the bottom, which now you can see the actual scores, final scores, preliminary with the growth. So reading went from 70 to 71 and you need 75 to be accredited. Math went from 70 to 68. And for science, there, there are no growth points available and same thing with history. So it's the same scores as out of the gate.
And for math, they needed 70?
Yes. For, for math, they needed 70, so we were, they were very close. They were very close. Yes, ma'am. Okay, this is the same, again, same format. You can see the out of the gate to the growth, sat by sat for each one. The chronic absenteeism, 15 percentage points. So that is a great effort right there. Look at the indicators. You can see in reading, we will be, we're projected to be at level three. Math, level two. Science, level three. And chronic absenteeism, level one.
So I, and this is a straight question, but if science is included in the accreditation process of a school, why do they not get growth points for that?
Because it's, you know, you, you test in fifth grade and then you test in eighth grade.
So you're not testing every year?
That's right.
Oh, okay. If you tested every year?
They can see how you grow from one year to the next.
Okay, okay.
Uh, this is a summary of basically just what I went over. And I will now go to the high school. The high school is a little bit different because you have other.
May I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
At, at the middle school, the SOLs, they, that is, you're measuring the growth based on that, on the SOLs? Is that?
So. So the, so if you go back right here, you see here, there's no, this is just out of the gate. This is a, you know, how many students took it, how many students passed compared to how many students failed. And that's what these scores are. But then you was talking, like Ms. Kimbrough was asking, talking about that you do have kids that will move, but not make that 400, but they might go from a 250 to a 320. So we want to recognize that growth and the state will give points. It's almost like the student passed, basically, because we grew them from one category to the next category and the state sets the brackets. And so the students, if they move from one bracket to the next, then.
But the, does it affect their ability to pass in the middle school at all? Does it? Does it, does it, that test, does it, the SOL, does it affect their?
Like whether they can go to the next grade level?
Measure that proficiency based on SOL in the, in the middle school?
The middle school, it doesn't impact them from going from one grade to the next. It doesn't prevent them from graduating. It's just, you know, it's a test that we use to get information from and then focus our remediation, our efforts. At the high school, it does count. You, you have to get certain, you, you gotta have verified credits is what it's called. So you take the class and you gotta pass the SOL.
Cause it looks like it's more incentive in the high school to pass the SOL, that they have to pass it by then.
Yes.
Middle school is not, do we have any type of incentive like that in the middle school? You know, SOLs, you know, to make, you know?
I know what you're saying. To, to pet, to encourage them to?
Do their best.
And pass the test. No, I mean, they're, they have pep rallies. They, they do, they, as in the staff, they encourage the students to do well. They do practice tests, again, pep rallies, things like that. They have boot camp of sorts for those students as they get closer to the test. But that would, that's the extent of it right now.
Sometimes, you know, you would think with some children that, you know, if they, they also see the significant impact of the test, then they may not, they may not focus on taking the test.
They have, I do know that they have parties and things for students who have scored well above. They've done that in the past, but overall, no, it is, it has not been incentivized as chronic absenteeism division-wide has been incentivized.
So that's something to be proud of, yeah?
Yes.
All right, so the high school's a little bit different because they have other standards of quality that we're actually doing very well on. And so I had them in this presentation also. All right, so the high school, before I go, they don't have growth. They have some call recovery, so I'll, I'll explain that as we're going through it. Okay, so this is out of the gate, scores for the high school. You can see they went from 77% from 2022, 2023 to a 75. And math, they went up four points from 58 to 62. Science, they stayed the same. And, and history, they went up 17 percentage points. Now, again, when I was talking about recovery, it's subsequent. Recovery is if a student fails the previous SOL and they pass the current. But only certain subjects can you do that in, like algebra and reading. So you'll see that we do have some recovery points here. In 2022, 2023, they only had one. However, last school year, for this academic accreditation year, there was 11 percentage points. So right now, we're standing to have 86% in our reading. Math, you can see they went from 61 to a 69, only missing it by one point. They would've been accredited in math, reading, both. And they were so close. It was like a 69.3. It was points, tenths of a point from being accredited. Science, recovery is not possible and neither is history at the high school. So those scores would stand. Same format, you see the out of the gate and recovery back to back. And you can see the indicators on the bottom. We are level one in reading, level three in math and level three in science. The other standards of quality that I'd like to point out and definitely show that we're moving in the right direction is decreasing the dropout rate from 15% to 9%. The graduation and completion index, which is showing that we're having our students graduate and graduate on time. It goes from 82 to 87.64, basically an 88% increase, six percentage points. The college and career readiness, we're looking at a lot of growth there. You know, almost 10 percentage points and chronic absenteeism dropped 4%. So we look at the indicators, we're a level two for the dropout. Level, we're level one for our graduation and completion index. And the college, career and civic readiness, we're level one and level two in chronic absenteeism. Lastly, that's the summary right there of basically what I just covered. And that would bring the presentation to an end.
So the high school would have all yellow and green and be accredited if it were not for that one point in mathematics and science?
That's right. We, yes, ma'am. And it's really tenths of a point with, with the math.
Math.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
There is no additional update for the court of action under this time.
You going down the calendar?
The major point here would be September 10th, which is next week. Interims are distributed and we will have parent conferences. It's in here as well, should be. September 10th. Yeah, the early dismissal has to do with parent conferences.
Board members comments, comment, board members?
Yes, sir. I just like to, I'm just reflecting just to myself just now about, we're pretty much a month into school and we saw earlier today, you may have a school shooting. So I want to just thank our staff members across our division that the care and love they provide for our kids and working daily to make, from our bus drivers. Each one of those kids get on the bus to, when they arrive at school, receiving a smile by potentially the cafeteria worker is the first one they'll see there when they have their breakfast and their lunch and throughout the day. Students, our children are seeing a lot of interaction from a lot of different team members across our division, across our schools. So that safety factor that goes into it and that care factor and that love factor. And also the miles that are bus drivers that are behind that wheel safeguarding our kids daily to and from home. And, and just thank each one.
I, I'd like to recognize that we're, it appears that we're in a thrust, in a good direction. It looks like we're, we, you know, we, and we have, but yet we have our work cut out for us. We have a new building project that's going on. We, we have to have, you know, we, we have to have that in place and the people, the right people in place for that and overseeing that building project. And then we have, we have the, you know, we have the curriculum. We have academics that look like they're headed in a positive direction. And I, I just realized that we have our work cut out for the good of our students. That they are, you know, we see that they are, we, we are going in a good direction, our students are. You know, we have to make sure that everything we do has our student, their, their, their performance, their learning and their environment. We make sure that we create a good environment for them to learn, to achieve as much as they can. So as a board, that is our responsibility right now. I'd like to make sure that we, as a board, make sure that we do that and as parents. And we put our efforts towards it.
Anyone else? I'd also like to compliment the administration and the teachers on the schools. They were better, not the best, but we still have work to do, as you said. But I, I do, I do think that we are moving in the right direction. Anyone else? All right. Correspondents?
General correspondents, nothing that would stand out necessarily.
All right, you're back to closed session. And we will need to go back into closed session. So I need a motion.
So.
So move?
Second.
And second? All in favor? All in favor? All right, thank you.